I'd like to call the Regular City Commission Meeting to Order of December 18th. Thank you all for finding us in our temporary location this evening. And I'd ask that all of you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. First of all, there are copies of the agenda available at the back of the room, as well as at the Recorder's Desk. We have a couple of changes to the agenda this evening. First of all, as Item 1A, we are going to accept the resignation of City Commissioner Allison Iverson.[75.64][75.64](Applause) Item 1B is a matter of appointing our Mayor Pro Tem. We are going to delete Items 2 and 5 that are currently on the agenda. They'll be moved to the January Commission Meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that we approve this evening's agenda with the addition of Item 1A, the resignation of Commissioner Allison Iverson, the addition of Item 1B, the appointment of Mayor Pro Tem, and the removal of Items 2 and 5.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion opposed. Motion carries. Approval of the minutes of the Regular City Commission Meeting of November 20th and the Special Meeting of November 26th.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve those minutes.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Communications. We have a couple of communications that were presented to us this evening that I'm going to read into the record. One of them is from the City of Pleasant Ridge. It has come to our attention that there may be a push to eliminate Drag Queen Storytime at the Huntington Woods Library. As partners in the library, the Pleasant Ridge City Commission would like to extend our support and admiration for the Drag Queen Storytime. We urge the Huntington Woods City Commission to continue to offer this program at the library. We know that the library is often full for these events, sometimes even with waiting lists. This is a testament to the success and popularity of the program. We believe one of the defining characteristics that make Pleasant Ridge, Huntington Woods, and our neighboring communities popular and welcoming places to live is our common acceptance of people's rights to choose to live their lives in ways that make them happy, so long as these choices do not negatively impact their neighbors or the common good. Programs such as Drag Queen Storytime celebrate and reflect the diversity of lifestyles. We understand that a program such as Drag Queen Storytime may generate some controversy from time to time. We urge the Huntington Woods City Commission to continue this program because we believe each family may decide whether to attend programs such as this. Those opposed to it can simply not attend. But we believe that those in opposition should not be allowed to eliminate the opportunity for those who enjoy this program for being able to continue to do so. Sent by Kurt Mesker, Mayor, Jason Kresick, the Commissioner, Ann Perry, Commissioner, Brett Scott, Commissioner, and Amanda Wall, Commissioner.[257.69][257.69](Applause) Okay, so I don't believe there were any other communications. So, moving on to our County Commissioner-Elected Official remarks. Commissioner Zach, our County Commissioner here. I don't see her. Okay. State Representative Wittenberg wanted to attend, but he did send a communication in case he was unable to get here in time. So I will read that into the record at this time as well. Growing up in Huntington Woods, installed in me the values of diversity and inclusion, I am proud to uphold these values as a legislator. We are all blessed to live in such a welcoming community, which is why I was so taken aback by the public comments condemning Drag Queen Storytime. The comments implying our community is weakened by the sharing of diverse perspectives flies in the face of the values of inclusion and diversity that make Huntington Woods strong. Our LGBTQ neighbors and everyone living in Huntington Woods are family, regardless of their sex, sexual orientation, gender identity, race, or religion. And that's why this is a vibrant community. I support the Huntington Woods Library in continuing with the Drag Queen Storytime and hope it continues to teach our children about the beauty of diversity and inclusion. Signed, Robert Wittenberg, State Representative.[360.31][360.31](Applause) Now is the opportunity for public participation. I have a feeling that I know why most of you are here this evening. I'm guessing it is regarding the Storytime program at our library. Am I correct? It's unfortunate that a hate group from California has been contacting the city and demanding that the program be canceled. The city intends to ignore that demand since the program is popular[404.12][404.12](Applause) and supported by our residents, and that is who your City Commission is responsive to.[417.62][417.62](Applause) Public Safety is aware of the possible protests at the next Storytime, and they have a contingency plan prepared utilizing area departments. We do not plan to take any action on the Drag Queen Storytime program tonight, but we are happy to listen to the residents' comments on the program. I do ask that when you approach the microphone, you give us your name and address. And if you could limit your comments to one to two minutes at the most, we have a feeling we have a lot of people that would like to say something. So let's try and give as many people an opportunity as possible.
Commissioners, thank you and good evening. My name is Tracy Pease. I come to you today as someone who has deep ties to this community, as well as my younger brother, my sister, and my two children graduated from Berkeley High School, all while living in Huntington Woods. My parents still live in Huntington Woods to this day. So you can imagine how shocked I am that I am here, having to defend the LGBTQ community against former Commissioner Iverson, who felt it necessary to be involved in a parent's decision to take their children to Drag Queen Storytime under the guise of protecting the children. Protecting them from what? Because I do believe in protecting our children. Michigan is ranked number two in human and sex trafficking. We have kids who don't have enough to eat, that have poison-drinking water, we all know who to thank that to. We have kids being killed in school shootings, and not one has been committed by someone in the LGBTQ community. In March, these kids asked for our help in the form of March for Our Lives, and still nothing has been done. We have kids ODing and dying from opioid use, and kids committing suicide because of bullying that is caused by people like ex-Commissioner Iverson and these anti-gay groups. But you are concerned over Tootsie and Ms. Doubtfire reading books that teach them about tolerance and acceptance. Ms. Iverson has opened a door to allow hate groups to come and spout hatred and intolerance 200 feet away from an elementary school and our rec center. What is wrong with her? Who is she to tell anyone what they can or cannot teach their kids or who can teach them? She's leaving the community, she resigned her position, but before she did that, she felt like taking on an unpopular and hateful stance. Talk about a lame duck. You know, pulling a Rick Snyder. Grow up, mind your own business. If you don't want your kids to participate in this activity, then please, 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 do not take them to Drag Queen Storytime. Stop perpetuating hate. It's time to grow up.[638.04][638.04](Applause)
My name is Angie Povolitis. I'm a resident of Huntington Woods, a library patron, a mother, a former sex crimes and child sexual abuse prosecutor, and current sexual assault policy attorney. I have become accustomed to seeing our wonderful community's many attributes highlighted in local and national news. There is no better place to raise a family than Huntington Woods, not only because of our wonderful city services, but because of the people who make up this city. At our core, we are welcoming and caring and accepting of all. Former Commissioner Iverson's views and comments about the library's Drag Queen Storytime program couldn't be farther from those views shared by most residents. I absolutely respect her right to have her own opinion, even one that is very different from my own. In fact, that's likely one thing that she and I can agree upon, that others with different positions can have those differences. It isn't that she disagrees, it is the manner in which she voiced her opposition that I take issue with. Encouraging, support, and protest from an outside hate group, I'm not going to use their name because I think they crave attention and they don't deserve it. And most importantly, the reason and logic behind both her view and the propaganda and falsehoods that the outside group spews. This is the reason I am here tonight at this meeting, knowing that she has resigned and likely would not be in attendance. And also to share my perspective as a former child sexual abuse prosecutor. Many have seen and read the email exchange between Ms. Iverson and that outside group. The group's arguments against the Drag Queen Storytime amount to transphobic, fear-mongering, and the reason includes, I quote, "This program is subjecting innocent little children to the normalization of dysfunctional behavior." They use terms such as "a pack of child predators." They say it was twisted and dangerous farce that will endanger children. That was the language that was used in their first email to the commission, where Iverson did not denounce those comments as false or lies. Instead, she thanked him. She encouraged them to get more people involved. The group, after her encouragement, then responded and talked about how little children are exposed to unthinkable corruption, how parents are handing their children over to sexual predators, how innocent children are being brainwashed. The group's reasoning and logic for opposing this program, again, is nothing but transphobic, fear-mongering, built upon lies and falsehoods. And in our community, facts matter. The truth matters. The idea that children exposed to other ways of life are somehow at danger or at risk for sexual victimization is completely and utterly false. Based upon almost 20 years of prosecuting child sexual abuse cases, I can tell you with complete conviction, our kids are at more danger with priests or world-renowned Olympic gymnastic doctors, predators I have prosecuted and put in prison, than at a library program such as the Drag Queen Story Hour. In fact, the only people who have put our children in harm's way are those who have encouraged and invited hate groups to protest our community. I thank you for this opportunity to speak and give my perspective, and I thank you to the commissioners and the city leaders who have responded individually to my emails and my concerns. I want to thank Joyce Crum and the entire library staff for what they do to enrich Lastly, I am so proud to live in a community where we can have this type of discussion and come together and welcome everyone. I encourage all of our commissioners to stand in opposition to this bigotry. You are the elected leaders of our community, and you speak for the rest of us. Please tell all that are listening here and throughout the nation, because this has garnered national attention, that we are welcoming and accepting community to all members, regardless of sexual orientation, gender identity, race, religion, or class. Thank you for your service.[933.35][933.35](Applause)
Good evening. So my name is Jalisa Bad. I am from Detroit. I work with the Fair Michigan Justice Project in connection with the Prosecutor's Office and Kim Worthy. First, I want to tell this community, thank you so much. It's very rare that the trans community ever has a space with so many allies and so much support, so I'm very, very happy to be here. First thing I want to say is, I work with prosecuting crimes that are against the LGBT community, specifically trans women, trans women of color. A lot of those crimes are murders, extortion, rape, robberies, the worst of what you can think of. Children are our future. I had a wish that when I was growing up, there was representation for myself, or just a learning experience for communities and other people. The same children that we are raising now that are going to this library are the same children that are going to be interacting with other children that are just like me. And I want them to have the benefit and the knowledge of just being able to be culturally competent and knowing that there's diversity and differences. So I just wanted to thank everybody for this opportunity. My speech was going to be a lot longer, but she is not here. So, thank you guys, and you guys have a wonderful evening.[1020.81][1020.81](Applause)
Good evening. I am Janice Coin Dexter, and I happen to be the transgender specialist/victim advocate for Equality Michigan. I also represent the Trans Sisters of Color Project and also Women's March Michigan.[1045.13][1045.13](Applause) So, when we heard about the ex-commissioner's comments and her rhetoric coming out against the Drag Queen Storytime, it was definitely a responsibility to be here, to stand with Raven, to stand with the program, but to also stand with the community of Huntington Woods. And we can go on all night talking about the ex-commissioner and her actions and her words, but I'd rather congratulate the community, the commission, and everyone who came out tonight, because this is the face of resistance. This is what it means to have a communal response to hate and bigotry that is no need, no necessary, and no room in our communities. And I don't live here, I stay in Southfield, but it's a neighboring community. I come here, I shop here, I have family and friends who live here. So for me, when there's a problem festering to this magnitude that can eventually cause the harm that her comments and that her rhetoric can cause, it causes suicide, it causes depression, it causes kids to go home and hang themselves when they feel that they have nowhere else to turn to. When you have this level of hate, it's very dangerous and it's toxic. And Huntington Woods has shown tonight and through the past couple days that it is not acceptable and there's no room for it. And we congratulate you. I myself, especially as a black trans woman, I find it very commendable that your community has stepped up and responded this way, because just last week, I was working with a trans woman of color who was murdered. I'm still working with her family, going to trial with her, seeing about the aftercare of this level of hatred. So job well done, and keep it up.[1159.26][1159.26](Applause)
Hi, good evening. My name is Azrael Apaf. I live at 13329 Ludlow Avenue, and I'm a senior at Berkeley High School. I came out as trans when I was 13. At that time, I didn't know, or even really know of, any other trans people. I think that if, when I was younger, I had an opportunity to attend something like Drag Queen Storytime, that might have changed the conditions under which I came out. Because when I came out, I was so scared. I was so depressed. I didn't leave my house. I was admitted to a hospital for being suicidal. And it was only then, it was only then that I realized that I had to come out, because I couldn't live otherwise. And I wonder if I could have realized sooner. I wonder if I could have had more of my childhood to be myself. And I hope that we can all recognize that Iverson's actions that she took, it was never about Drag Queen Storytime, it was never about an event. It was about the suppression and oppression of other people. My voice is shaking now, but I'm not afraid. I am not afraid.[1254.71][1254.71](Applause) I'm not afraid of her. I am not afraid of mass resistance, and this city is not backing down.
Good evening. My name is Danielle McGuire, and I live on Talbot. And I don't have prepared remarks, but I came here tonight because I believe so strongly in the cause. I first want to really thank our library and its staff. Mrs. Joyce is amazing.[1297.83][1297.83](Applause) We are very lucky to have somebody with a master's degree and dedication and devotion to our children and our community. Not every library has that, and we're all very grateful that we have someone like Mrs. Joyce and the rest of our staff there.[1313.83][1313.83](Applause) I also want to say that I am really disappointed that Commissioner Iverson didn't show up tonight, and I told her so. We are her constituents for the last three years, I guess, and no longer, but she needed to be here. She needed to hear what we had to say. And her absence here tonight is cowardly and reprehensible.[1341.01][1341.01](Applause) I also want to thank Ms. Raven and the trans community who came here and trusted us enough to support you and keep you safe tonight. We are not just allies, we are co-conspirators against hate and bigotry.[1362.33][1362.33](Applause) And I just want to say to the community, it is always, always our responsibility, as members of a majority, white, heterosexual, men and women, to always, always stand up for the most vulnerable people in our community. It is our responsibility to do that.[1388.71][1388.71](Applause) And the last thing I want to say is, gosh, I am so proud to live in Huntington Woods tonight.
Good evening. I'm Lauren Gold. I live on Parkwood. This is my daughter Maddie. She's an 11-year-old at Norum. I'm a father, husband, divorce attorney, former prosecutor, former child sexual assault prosecutor, former domestic violence prosecutor, and a proud resident of this city. It's my daughter who wants to talk tonight.
I don't think anything that I'll say will compare to anything that anybody else has said, but I just want to say that I love our library and I support it, and I support everybody that works there, and I support this program. And I think that everybody needs to know about the diversity, and everybody should be equal, and nobody should be discriminated against, because we're all human, and that's
There's really nothing I can add to that, except that I know, because of how much I know this city, that this experience is going to make us stronger. That we're the kind of city that not just comes up and speaks in favor of these things, but we're a place that when these things happen, we rise up and we walk away a stronger city than we were before.[1490.83][1490.83](Applause)
Hello, members of council. My name's Julian Music. I am the Director of Ferndale Pride in the city of Ferndale. We are the largest LGBTQ AI, fully-inclusive pride festival. I am not a resident of Huntington Woods, I live in Ferndale. However, I did grow up at 10705 Elgin, and a lot of my life is actually molded by the person standing behind me, Jeff Nolish, and the teachings of his wonderful parents, Judy and Jack Nolish, as I grew up, as a lot of time in their home. I wanted to come here tonight because the city of Ferndale often grants me the opportunity to speak on behalf of the city. I want to stand in solidarity with your decision to accept the resignation of Ms. Iverson. I do wish that she had chosen a different path, but engaging a hate group to come into the city is very dangerous. I know that because of the news coverage, this will hopefully follow her, and if she does decide to run for council or any other position again, this will be a big mark on her record and will keep her out of running cities where she could bring in such horrific hate groups. We are very fortunate in Ferndale that our pride festival has, when we've had protesters, they have been friendly, but because we have been so accepting, we are starting to not have as much protest. And so we hope that Ferndale will rub off a little bit on Huntington Woods, and you'll be able to continue the Drag Queen Story Hour and other events that promote diversity. In addition, prior to this entire situation, the city of Ferndale has proposed some Drag Queen Story Hours, because there was such a high demand and there weren't enough spots, not enough spots available for the children. So we look forward to hopefully promoting those in the very near future. To Raven, I am so sad if this hurt you at all this week. You are a beautiful woman, and you do such an amazing thing for our children. It looks like you will become the premier storyteller in this area, and for that, that's the one good thing that has come out of this for you.
Good evening. My name is Jeffrey Nolish. I live at 3951 Second Avenue in Detroit, Michigan, but I grew up at 8620 Hendry Boulevard in Huntington Woods. And my mom and dad and sister and I had a house for 32 years here, and I wish that I had Drag Queen Storytime when I was growing up here. I was at the rec center here before this was built and swam in the pool prior to this one, and made some of the best friends and family that are in this crowd that you could ever ask for. The reason I'm here, though, is to urge and voice my support for the continuation of the Drag Queen Storytime, and at this point, too. There were not many people that looked like me growing up in Huntington Woods 38 years ago, and there were even fewer people that were adopted from international communities. And although this community made me feel supported and loved, there's always room for more. There's always room to be inclusive, there's always room to spread joy, and make people feel like they belong and trust that they're loved. And I think that this is a program that can help to do that, has done that, and will continue to do it under your leadership. So thank you for your time.[1721.48][1721.48](Applause)
Good evening. My name is Rich Feldman. I live at 10474 LaSalle Boulevard, and I have two children, one with a disability who is fully included because we lived in Huntington Woods, and a daughter who's a lesbian. So as I say, I get to go to two pride parades, the Disability Pride Parade and the Gay and Lesbian Pride Parade. But I came here tonight for a specific reason. I think we all know that a community that excludes even one of its members is no community at all. And the fact that the world and the social media is watching, I think the responsibility of this amazing, welcoming, and supportive group of folks this evening would like to urge the council to consider some kind of proclamation that takes the offensive in this conversation, and proclaims how proud we are that this person challenged us and folks rose to the occasion to create a deeper sense of what it means to belong. So I would ask us to think about what kind of proclamation of proclamation, what kind of historical statement can be made from this council as you hear all the amazing courageous voices of folks in the room. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Morris Brown. I'm a proud resident of Huntington Woods for seven years now, and I just wanted to come in today and voice my opinion on this situation. I have a daughter who is five years old. Her name is Brooklyn, and she loves going to this library. She absolutely loves it. So just wanted to recognize, first of all, Ms. Joyce, the Friends of the Library Program, and the Huntington Woods Library for the great programs they provide throughout the year, not just for children, but also for adults. They really do an outstanding job. We, we come regularly. So Thursday is our storytime, and two weeks ago, we, at storytime, Ms. Joyce read a story about Hanukkah. And I'm pretty sure this Thursday, we'll do a story on Christmas and probably some sort of craft and everything like that. And this whole situation has gotten me thinking about, you know, kind of the slippery slope we're going down. And at the, at the readings, you know, the children are not thinking about, is this person Jewish? Are they Christian? Are they an atheist? The children just want to come here and hear a good story. And that's the case with Drag Queen Storytime, too. They just want to come in, hear stories, and be entertained. And they do a great job, and they tell really good stories. And it's really unfortunate that the people who are voicing this concern are not coming to these sessions, they do not hear and see the love and genuine affection that's occurring. So that, that was really the key thing I wanted to communicate. You know, we, you know, we, we live in a, you know, an interesting time. There's a lot of hate out there right now. There's a lot of things that are messed up right now in our country, and we need to have, you know, throughout the four years that I've been coming here, if I had to choose three words that described the environment that we see at the library at these events, it would be love, kindness, and acceptance are common themes that I've seen throughout all the events, and that certainly is the case with Drag Queen Storytime. And we need more events where this message is communicated. Thank you for your time.
My name is Veronica Nantis. I live at 10795 Vernon. I have raised five of my own children. I've been involved with daycare and with the Huntington Woods group that used to be here, run by the parents. Never have I seen a child who doesn't know what to do with a box of dress-up clothes. They don't need encouragement. They don't need any assistance. I see no reason for this program other than to advance the cause of the adults, showing no need by the children. Having said that, I'm also opposed to the fact that people with my point of view, and I know that you are all aware of it, have been totally ignored, and our city manager went on television to say, "The city is opposed to this, and the only other people that are opposed to it are a hate group from out of state," when everyone here knows that letters have been received from residents months ago objecting to the program, that Ms. Iverson didn't come up with this idea herself. Members of the community have brought it to her. There are two sides to this, and because my, and because my view is different than others, I feel that I also have a right to express it. And I look for the same kind of consideration from people that you're willing to give to the other side. Thank you.
My name is Austin Franco, aka Dylan West. When Joyce first came to me and Raven first came to me and asked me to be part of this program, I jumped on it. I was very excited. If she could see the light up of the faces that the kids, when we come in and we do storytime, they are just so excited. They cooperate. They have fun with us. They always ask for more. I mean, they're, they're a good group. And I just think it's very uncooperative. I mean, she can have her opinion. I totally understand that. But this is helping, it's not teaching kids, oh, maybe I should come out, or maybe I should do this. It's teaching them acceptance. It's teaching them to not bully. We read many stories that have different opinions of bullying, accepting others of who they are, accepting people who they're born, what they're born with. So coming from that point of view and coming from an entertainer point of view, I just, other than Raven, I know this is big on Raven, but I mean, the community, and thank you, everyone, coming out and supporting Raven. Raven is a very amazing person, a sweetheart. So is Ms. Joyce. And I thank both of them for allowing me to come do the program. And we won't allow the haters to continue, because this is, this is your community, and you all have a voice, and I have a voice, and everyone else has a voice in here. And I'm hoping that this continues, because I love coming here every single month and reading to these kids. I mean, they look up to me and Raven, and I thank you guys. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Raven Turner, and I'm the hostess for Drag Queen Story Hour. A little bit about myself. A lot of people don't know, this community actually made me. I went to Norup Middle School. I graduated from Berkeley High School. I lived right on Lincoln Drive, all the way up into college. So this is my home. So I was honored and blessed to start this program with Joyce. And I was even more ecstatic to find out it's at the library where I spent from sixth grade to 12th grade doing research papers, homework, hanging out with my friends, coming back to this area. I played tetherball right in this court. So it was fun to come back. I'm honored. This program is not just about reading a story. It's giving children the voice that they need. I was honored to meet a nine-year-old trans girl who had never met anybody else like her. It was tears in her mother's eyes, and it wasn't of sorrow, it was of joy, because she finally let someone like her daughter, for her daughter. So this program is a great thing. It teaches acceptance, diversity, and education. And I'm glad to be a part of it, and I would never stop being a part of it. Thank you.
Hi, how's everybody doing? I'm, I want to say this first. I believe that love is something that we need. We need to love people and respect one another. And preaching that we should love and accept one another, it goes both ways. So does tolerance. Tolerance isn't about people who think like me. It's about how do we deal with people who are different from me. And I feel oftentimes the word hate is thrown around so loosely for people for having a different worldview. I'm a person who believes that this is not a good idea for our society. And there's tons of people, tons of people who think just like I do. But they don't come to public forums like this because they're called evil, they're called hateful, they're called bigots for having a point of view that's based on thousands of years of human history. I was reading about in the UK, they've had a 4,000% uptick in kids suffering or being confused about their gender. Lisa Lippman did a study, she's from Brown University, and found that 63% of the children in her survey, it wasn't until they were exposed to social media and their friends also being confused about their gender identity that suddenly they had questions themselves. I know more than likely that my comments will not change anybody's mind, and I respect the fact that many of you strongly disagree with me. I truly do. I don't hate anybody. I don't wish anybody harm. I don't wish anybody ill will or suffering. But there are millions of us across this nation who do not feel that we should subtly change our culture. It's a culture we're going on right now. It's a culture we're going on for how we think our nation should go forward. And the human family is the foundation of our culture. And we start teaching the children they can be whatever gender they want to be, we have no idea the implications that will have in our society. So again, I respect everybody's opinion, but there are millions of what we call the silent majority, who are not evil, we're not haters, we're not bigots, we're not intolerant. And we ask that tolerance be extended both ways. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jamie Powell Horowitz. I live at 26419 York Road in the city of Huntington Woods. Joyce Crum, librarian extraordinaire, thank you for promoting diversity through your program. Raven Turner, thank you for coming home and reading to our children. I hope you can look around and know that you are so wanted here, and we are so appreciative of you coming home. Thank you. So I'm a prosecutor. I work for the For Michigan Justice Project. We prosecute hate crimes against the LGBTQ community. I work with Jalisa Abad, and I work with Janice Poindexter from Equality Michigan. And I am honored to work with them every day. And I want everyone here to know that the majority of the hate crimes that we prosecute involve crimes against the trans community. This might surprise some of you to know, but the average life expectancy for a trans woman of color is 35 years old. They suffer from high rates of suicide and high rates of homicide. There are no laws that protect the trans community. They can be denied housing. They can be denied, be denied employment. Programs like this encourage children, they encourage children to interact with people who are different. They encourage acceptance. They encourage empathy. And I am so proud that I live in a community that is promoting these values. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. Huntington Woods, good evening. My name is Michael Richardson. I may not live in Huntington Woods, but I do work at the Detroit Zoo, which is literally right up the street. Literally. I would have walked here if I had to. I've been here for three hours waiting for this meeting. So I thank you all for having this meeting. To Joyce, thank you for this program, because this program is what this community needs. I'm removing the LGBT out of this. This is the program that our children need, because our children need to learn love and acceptance. And this program, which I've said it one time, was the best thing I've ever seen. To see children engaged, to see children involved, to see them learn that it's okay to be who you are. It's okay to love everybody in spite of their differences. It's a blessing to me, especially growing up as a black man, and especially living in this community where we're targets. We are targeted by people not based on our character, but based on our skin color and based on what it is that we love. And I love to preach love. I love to preach that we all can live with one another and coexist with one another without hating each other, because that's what we need, especially in times like this. To Raven, if you quit this program, I promise you, I, we'll, we'll talk later. To Ms. Iverson, your comments reveal one thing. You don't have a problem with the program. You don't have a problem with the community. The problem is with yourself, because at the end of the day, only someone who thinks like this has issues within themselves that they can't really get out, so they have to impose those to anyone else. The fact that she's not here is pathetic, is cowardice, and honestly, she should have been here, because no matter what you do, no matter how many people you get to expose your hate, love conquers awe. And as you can see from everybody here, from everybody that could be here but is not, and for everybody that will be watching this nationwide, love will power over everything, no matter what it is you do, no matter how it is that you go about it. The only thing I could offer Ms. Iverson is a prayer. That's all I can give her right now, because at the end of the day, to fair face a rat face, I don't understand how you hate from outside of the club when you can't even get in. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sarah. I live at 10514 LaSalle. And just really quickly, I want to say, my husband and I moved here nine years ago and bought our first home. We got married while we were living here, and just this past January, we had our first child here. And since I heard about this program, I've been waiting for my son to get a little bit older so I could bring him, already planning to bring him to the January date. I just want to say that my son, who, just being shy of one-year-old, has no hate in his heart. He has not been taught hate in our household. I am excited at the opportunity to expose him to different walks of life, to different lifestyles, and to teach him that we can all live peacefully together while living our truth. I really quickly want to just say thank you to all the members of the LGBTQIA community who came here tonight and trusted our community with standing up for them and doing the right thing and being here. I think, given the climate in our country right now, it is so important that we all come together and be vocal about our support for these marginalized communities. I want to say I'm proud to live here, and see you at Drag Queen Storytime in January. I'm excited.
Hi, everyone. My name is Eleanor Daniel. I live at 10094 Talbot. I am the Huntington Woods Teen Council Manager, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Student Chair, junior at Berkeley High School, and employee here at the Latchkey Program. Being with these children on a daily basis, you see that they are innocent. But you see something they do best with their innocence is that they love. They love their friends, family, and classmates, despite the color of their skin, gender identity, or sexual orientation. I want to voice my student support for this program and to thank Ms. Crum for her efforts in making everyone in this community feel comfortable. I also want to thank the rest of the library staff for their efforts in the growth of this city. Finally, thank you to Raven. You are strong, and you are beautiful. Thank you, everyone.
My name's Terry Trombley. Excuse me, I'm a little bit dry. I want to thank the honorable mayor, council. I'm sorry, I'm not with an organization. I'm not with an organization. Yeah, I'm not.
Please just let the gentleman speak. Thank you.
If you, if you want, you can assume, I am a friend of mass resistance, yes. I am not a member of anything.
Mr. Trombley, please just address the commission. Thank you.
And I apologize. I hope, I hope that's satisfactory. Okay, yes. Anyway, I want to thank the mayor and the council members for this opportunity to speak. And again, in the interest of transparency, I am one of those dreaded out-of-towners who came into town, but I would like to say why it is that I came. What brings me here, excuse me, I'm going to raise my glasses, is my concern for vulnerable children, the vulnerable children of our state. Any children, any children, even inadvertently, and I believe that this is greatly the case here, will become victims of the sexual ideologies of adults. I do not mean to indicate here any malintent on the part of anyone, you know, that I can identify, in either the adult participants of the Drag Queen Story Hour, whether they be those conducting these or parents who bring their children to these activities. My concern, frankly, is that this function is an enshrinement of gender dysphoria, which is a duly-defined mental illness, unfortunately suffered by individuals beset with this disorder. It's an illness that requires compassionate treatment, care by competent professionals, and not for its enshrinement, the enshrinement, excuse me, the enshrinement of its disorder manifestations by our public officials.
Please, no, please, quiet, please. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Especially in the, that promotion especially... Especially in the-- that promotion, especially in the presence and with the participation of our vulnerable children. I'm stating this as a father of four now-grown children who at my-- because of my ignorance, were serially preyed upon by a sexually disoriented--
And a liar.
--sexually-oriented, disoriented individual. And you-- any of you who are over thirty years old will have seen my news on W-- the news of my family and this tragedy on WXYZ for a period of over a year and a half. So I'm not in the least unfamiliar with what constitutes sexual predation. I would therefore ask you to-- and I want to say one other thing, forgive me for taking so long here. I've heard a number of prosecutors speak tonight about this issue, and not one of them has addressed the fact that this is the enshrinement of a disorder to children.
Most of you--
I would therefore ask you--
--in heterosexual households, that are transgender--
Please, Mr. Trombley was quiet during your comments. Please allow him the same courtesy.
We can talk afterwards if that's-- if you'd like.
Wrap it up for me and--
Pardon?
Please continue, but close.
I'll be-- I have just a couple of more comments.
Yeah.
First of all, I don't hate anybody, and I'm certainly not calling in anybody in this room, anybody, a sexual predator. Please understand that. That's not my intent here. However, the enshrinement of a disorder to children, the adult enshrinement of that is something that I would simply ask--
Mr. Mayor, his three minutes is up, and I've heard all I want to hear. If we could just wrap this up, please.
I'm sorry I'm hard to hear.
No place for me. No place for me. No place for me.
Please, quiet down, everyone. Mr. Trombley, are you about to finish up here, please?
I'm wrapping it up. I'm sorry. I'm losing my chain of thought here. But anyway, I would ask you to consider the points that I've made here tonight, especially the fact that it's a promotion of a disordered behavior to children. And I ask you to reconsider the story hour and with a possible replacement of-- with some healthy alternative activities, which are of sound content, sound scientifically and biologically content, and are of age-appropriate content for the children who attend them. I do thank you again for this opportunity to address this egregious interaction with the most vulnerable among us. And like I say, I am very familiar with the mechanics of that. Those that are of such a detriment and a concern--
Thank you for your comments, sir. Next, next, please.
And a current concern to their truly healthy formation. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Londa Gatt, and I just got a couple of comments.
What's your address?
Please, no comments from the audience, please. Everyone has been respectful. As other people have an opportunity to speak, please allow the speaker to speak. Thank you.
Well, the reason I'm here is I have no problem with the Drag Queen Story itself. But when it's paid, when it's in a public institution and it's taxpayers' money, I have a problem with that. It's at the library. It's at the library. So anyways, I feel that the children have enough exposure to bullshit nowadays with this transgender and everything else. I-- whatever. So I'm sorry.
All right, everybody--
I'm sorry. I apologize. I understand. I apologize.
If we don't have some more cooperation, we're going to put an end to the public participation here.
My point is, I don't think our children should be exposed, you know, to this type of learning, okay? If people want to do that, they need to do that in their own environment. They shouldn't do it in the public. That's all I'm saying. No, it's not on my dime. It's not on my dime.
Hi. I spoke previously. I have one question for the woman who spoke before me who refused to identify herself or her place of residence. Where are we to exist if not in public? Are we supposed to lock ourselves in our homes? Where are we supposed to be? Are we not allowed to be part of this society just because you view us as less than human? That is what we are to you. Stop saying otherwise. Stop sugarcoating it. I'm tired. Say what you mean. For once, for once, just say what you mean.
That's right.
We're human beings. We're part of society. And more importantly, we're the tax pay-- we're the taxpaying citizens of this town, not you. You are-- you're not a citizen of this town.
Not the same as this town.
Honestly, that's it for now. I thank you all very much.
Good evening. I'm Michelle Elder, 25516 Wareham. We just saw a lot of hate. And I think it's really important for this community right now to remember who we are. I moved here about four years ago. My husband grew up here. We have three generations of our family living here. We are taxpayers. And my daughter uses the library. Thank you to the wonderful, amazing library staff and program that's run here. And a part of the reason why I agreed to move here, like many recruits, these are spouses of people who have grown up here, is because of what this community represents. This is a community about love, about diversity. And for me, it's really important that my child is raised in a community like this. I'm a working mom. I am gone about half of the time during the week. And I depend on the city services and programs like this to instill upon her the love and the acceptance that first attracted us to raise our family here. So I hope, as we all stand here tonight, you take a moment to remember who we are as a community and where we go from here. And Huntington Woods can be that example for not just Michigan, but there-- I understand Washington Post has picked us up. This is an opportunity for us to show who we are and to be that example of love and diversity and acceptance. Thank you.
Hi. Good evening. I'm Ellie Moscow. I live at 10867 West Eleven Mile. I am a mom of two children, and we love the library and we love Ms. Joyce. We love all the storytimes, especially the Drag Queen Storytime. And the great thing about it is that, as a mom, in my opinion, for my children, Drag Queen Storytime presents a wonderful learning opportunity for my children to learn respect, understanding, acceptance, tolerance, and just an ability to accept people for who they are and what they are and not think anything of it. And the lovely thing about this community is that people are entitled to have their own opinions, and people are entitled to come to the program or not. And at the end of the day, if you're not interested in the program, if it's not for you, don't go. I'm Jewish. I don't go to the Santa program. Okay, cool. Other people do. That's great. Good for them. They enjoy it. They get something out of it. But my big concern, and it was raised before, and I think this is what a lot of people are really concerned about, is the fact that, and we'll say it again, a hate group has been brought into our community right next to the school, right by the-- into the library where our children come on a daily basis. And that makes me, as a parent, very nervous and very scared for our community. And so that's why I'm here tonight. I want to say thank you again to Ms. Joyce, to the library staff, to the wonderful hostesses and hosts of the Drag Queen Storytime. Thank you all.
Hello, I'm Kevin Withane. I'm at 25844 Salem Road. I'm not a citizen of the U.S. I'm a resident. I live in and work in Michigan. I live in Huntington Woods, and I bought a house recently. I feel I wanted to come and say something tonight because actually, I really like this community. It's the first place in thirteen years I've felt like I'm at home. And I've moved around from country to country and ended up here with my job. It's the first place I've bought home. And when I was looking in Michigan, when I first moved here, I moved to Bloomfield Hills, and I saw these signs, hate is not here, and we don't like that, and everybody's accepting. I never saw my neighbors. I saw them in nine months, once, each neighbor, once. I moved to Huntington Woods. I see my neighbors all the time. My son and my wife go to the library and use the programs, not just in Huntington Woods, but in Royal Oak and Ferndale as well. And it's just an accepting community. And that's, I think, why we love it, because it's a community. And sadly, this society and this world is becoming more divisive. People feel marginalized and they feel like they can't have their own opinions. And I think everybody can have their own opinions, and it's all about acceptance. We accept people have different opinion, and that's fine. It's when it goes into hate. And, well, you can't have this because I disagree with it. Well, you can have your opinion, but if we would like to do that for our child, send them to Drag Queen Storytime, that's what I would like to do. Everybody's equal, and programs like this teach children about acceptance. And that's where we, as adults, have failed because we haven't accepted people. We've-- everybody's equal, and we've chosen not to treat them that way. And we need to stop. That's it. Just need to stop. Accept, love ourselves, then we can love others.
My name is Chris Davidson. I grew up at 10055 Vernon. I moved back to 12733 Nadine. My wife would tell you that on our first night meeting each other, I mentioned that I wanted to raise kids in Huntington Woods. That was about eight years ago in downtown Chicago. And she would tell you, and she'd be correct, although I don't remember that conversation, she'd be correct, that I have always wanted to move back specifically to Huntington Woods to raise my kids. And for these reasons, because who else offers all of this? Huntington Woods offers all of this, and I don't know any other place that does. Speaking as a cisgendered white male with a fair amount of privilege, even I can see that we have a problem in this nation right now with toxic masculinity. And for the past-- for the past couple of weeks, I've been looking for more books to introduce to my son Mason, who, by the way, loves Ms. Joyce and goes every week with grandpa and his babysitter. I've been looking for ways to introduce new concepts to him that might help to educate him better than maybe previous generations had with regard to toxic-- what is now toxic masculinity. Masculinity is fine, but toxic masculinity is what I'm talking about, going too far with the machoism. And I found some books, and I was thinking about donating them to the library. And then just this week, actually, my father-in-law sent me here because he found out about this program. And I think this program's a fantastic step in that direction. So as a lifelong Huntington Woods resident, as a taxpayer, and as a parent of people in Ms. Joyce's classes, I fully support this. I want to see it expanded. Thank you.
I almost left, but now that I see-- my name's Mark. I live in Huntington Woods. I was going to leave, but somebody's got to say something because it's like a hundred to two maybe here. I am the enemy. I am the white male. I am sorry that I'm a white male. I mean, come on, people. You see, but you don't perceive. You hear, but you don't understand. I love my enemy. I would never say words like this come out against these-- against anyone that's conservative or against The View. I would never say those words. But you hear them. You hear the jittering. You hear the emotion. That's how they do it. It's an indoctrination. But I love my enemies. And if they were true followers of Christ, they would know hope, peace, and love. Not this. See? Anything you say, they're against. That's all I want to say. There's got to be the other story. You gave no other canned statements.
What about the reverend's charity?
You never gave any canned statements on the other side. So obviously, it's a liberal city, and I'll be saddened when I leave. I'll be saddened when I leave. It used to be good, but saddened it left. So I mean, I'll be saddened, but I'll be happy. You notice what they have to do. They have to talk you down. They have the hate, but they don't understand it. I don't have hate. See? Y'all, all you want.
All right, I have to follow this. My name is Jason Machasik. I live on Borgman Avenue. I am the father of a seven-year-old and a four-year-old girl. A few years ago, on this very floor, my daughter and I, as well as many men across this community, cross-dressed with our children at the daddy-daughter dance. Yet, my daughter did not walk away gender-confused. It's ridiculous. A year ago, we had the honor of attending, I think it was the inaugural of Drag Queen Storytime. And again, my daughter walked away not gender-confused, but very accepting of somebody who is different than herself. And that's what's important here today. Flash forward ten years, if my daughter decides to come out as gay, as trans, as whatever, she will know that she's got parents who accept her for who she is, whatever she-- however she ends up, however, whatever way she-- wherever she goes in the world, however she sees kind of her destiny. I just want to say, I came here to, I think, you know, originally to talk about the villains of this story, but I want to talk about the heroes of this story, which are-- I want to recognize Ms. Joyce, who my children lovingly call Ms. Joyce, and our home away from home, which is the public library a block away from our house where we spend a lot of our time. And I just want to recognize all of the library staff who make these programs available to our children and make this a great community. Because I spent a lot of time in the library as a kid, and my imagination ran wild. Everything, you know, you read, you participate. I've never seen a program like this. And when it popped up, we were one of the first ones to attend. I also want to take the opportunity to just recognize Ms. Joyce. And I want to advocate, I understand that she is currently up for a full-time position at the library, and I want to support that. My taxpaying dollars support that. She's gone through all of the motions to-- I actually thought that she was a full-time employee-- My tax-paying dollars support that. She's gone through all of the motions to, I actually thought that she was a full-time employee of the library because she's there all the time, day and night. I mean, every time I go into the library, Ms. Joyce is there. So I just want to take this opportunity to recognize her and the rest of the library staff. And I actually plan to make a donation this year to the library, and I encourage all of our citizens to do so as well.
I'll try to keep it very brief. My name is Deb Kowski. I live at 13329 Ludlow Avenue. I am a resident of Huntington Woods. I'm the proud parent of three kids, including this wonderful guy right here. And I was not going to get up and speak after he did since there's not much I could say that could top anything he has said, but I did want to respond to a few of the comments that were made because I don't want to leave them on the record without being challenged. First and foremost, the suggestion by one of the outsiders, the non-Huntington Woods resident, who came into our community and threw around terms like mental illness and accused transgender people of being somehow dysfunctional or sick. DSM does not categorize being transgender as a mental illness, and I would urge anyone here who has any questions about it, please, talk to a doctor. Don't get your facts from a group, from a group that has been characterized by the Southern Poverty Law Center as a hate group. Talk to an actual medical professional. What is characterized as a mental, not a mental illness, but a disorder is the gender dysphoria, the discomfort that comes from the mismatch between one's perceived gender and one's physical self, which I would imagine is incredibly exacerbated by having to face things exactly like what people have had to face here tonight. People coming up and challenging not just their right to come and have a story time with our kids, but their right to exist as human beings. The effort to erase them. And I want to say in response to the people who came up and said, well, what about the children? What about, well, what about the children? What about the kid who is struggling with gender identity? Or the kid who doesn't know how to interact with somebody who's different from them? It's these kinds of events that are so necessary for them. And then what about the parents? When my son was 13 years old, he came out as trans. I live in my little orthodox Jewish bubble. I didn't know any trans people. I didn't even know what it meant. If I had had access to programs like what Ms. Raven does, if I had had a broader world experience, maybe I would have known better how to react and what to do, instead of having to, you know, read the whole internet in one night. This program is as important for parents as it is for kids. And I would urge the commission, the city, and everyone to please educate yourselves. There are so many resources sitting right here in the audience. If you want to learn more about what it truly means to be an ally to the transgender community or what it means to be trans, please, get your facts where they belong.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Lenny Newman. I live at 13147 Balfour for about 39 years. My children went to school here. And I'd like to say to the city, I'm glad we're having this open conversation, and I think it's very important for our city to have this. I also think if we want our children to be comfortable with themselves, then it's very important for them to be around adults who are comfortable with themselves. And a program like this is the kind of thing, and the kind of way, that kids can meet other people who are different, but who are comfortable with themselves. And that's how we learn to be comfortable grown-ups. So thank you to your staff and thank you for this moment.
Hi, my name's Eric Mann. I've lived in Huntington Woods for 30 years, the first 18 at 10454 Kingston, the last 11 or so at 13135 Nadine. And I want to address the people who are using these medical terms like disorders to talk about the concept of the existence of a drag queen. You know, you're talking, use the language of science and you're perverting it. And as a science teacher, you're not having that. You know? As the DSM-5 states, the DSM-5 written by American Psychiatric Association, the actual experts in mental health states, gender nonconformity is not the same as gender dysphoria, and that gender nonconformity is not in itself a mental disorder. The critical element of gender dysphoria is the presence of clinically significant distress associated with the condition. Now, I hear people like you who oppose EQST speak in the language of love and compassion, what you call confused people. You talk about the very real mental health disorders that occur among the LGBTQ community, but it's you who cause it. It is you who cause the pain. It is you who cause the hurt. And the actual experts in the field talk about clinically significant distress. You're sending them to the doctor. You're the ones who create this. And you literally cause the problem that you profess to care about. You're disingenuous at best, at worst, something I really can't say in this forum. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Adam Roche, resident here, live in Huntington in Talbot Avenue. I just wanted to say a couple of things to the committee. There was a gentleman who spoke to us earlier, who was representative of an organization. I'd like to just comment on what that organization actually stands for. If you look at the SPLC, Southern Poverty Law Center's website, they will characterize that organization as an organization in opposition to LGBT rights, often couched in rhetoric and harmful pseudoscience that demonstrates LGBT people as threats to children, society, and often public health. With that in mind, we heard a lot of that, but what I would like to ask this committee is that we had Allison Iverson, who is no longer on the committee, welcome this organization into our community. And Allison Iverson has publicly mentioned that she would write an apology letter, or at least telling this organization that they are no longer welcome. I would hope that the committee here would at least keep her to her word, to share that letter that she is supposed to write on behalf of Huntington Woods. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mike Corbin, 10464 Talbot. We've been there over 40 years, raised two amazing young men, one of whom chose to buy a house on Hart. So we're pretty excited about that and being close to grandchildren. And I think we've been here long enough that it's now the Corbin House rather than the Kleinsmith House, which is a nice thing. I'm a former member of the Library Advisory Board, former chair, current member of the board of the Friends of the Library. And we're very proud of this library. We're very proud that the city has chosen to budget the kind of dollars that it takes to have an institution like this in a city this size. And I think we all owe a debt to the commission for that. We have amazing staff. We have amazing programming. We have amazing support from the community. And I would be remiss if I didn't take this opportunity to encourage everybody here who's in support of the library to join the Friends of the Library. We'll have brochures out at the desk, and you can drop by the library anytime and come to our book sales. Support the institution that makes this kind of programming available. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Anne Fancy. I live on Elgin. I had zero intention of coming up here, but here I am. I am a two-mommy, I'm part of a two-mommy family. My wife and I live, have lived here now for seven years, and I realized there was no voice to this particular situation yet in this discussion. And I may have strong-armed my wife into moving into Huntington Woods, but specifically because I knew we wanted to raise a family here. I knew I wanted to have a child here, and I knew that I wanted an environment that was safe for her to be a part of this community, to have two parents that were perhaps a little bit different than her classmates. And I just think that it's so important that we continue to create spaces and communities like this for people who have families like mine because we're not going away, and we're only going to get louder and stronger. And I appreciate all of you for entertaining this conversation for so long, for standing up for Joyce and all you're doing. And I'm just really, really grateful for everyone who's here that's speaking to this really important conversation over and over again about acceptance and inclusion and tolerance and creating a safe community for all of our children. Thank you.
I'm 19. I live on 26011 Meadowcrest Boulevard. I'm 19. I'm in college. I'm going to admit, I'm a little bit out of touch with everything that's going on, but I've known about the trans storytime for a long time, and I'm in full support of it. When I heard that Councilwoman Iverson had invited a hate group to my community as a bisexual woman, I was scared. I was scared for myself. I was scared for these kids who are just, who are trying to have fun. They're just trying to learn and read and live their lives. I was scared for my community. And I had to speak about it. I just, I want to say, stop telling people they're not valid because you don't agree with their ideals. Trans people are valid. I have, I adore my best friend, Carter. He's a trans, ugh, he's amazing. And I've had so many people come up to me at school and say, why are you friends with him? He is creepy. He's a pervert. Like, he's a woman who is identifying as a man. Like, what about that is right? And I just look at them and I tell them, I don't have room for your hate. And I fully support everything that the library is doing. Oh my God, I'm sorry, I'm crying. Don't let this hate group come into our community and turn these kids off from learning, from figuring out who they are. Do not let them tell our kids that they are not valid. Thanks.
Councilmembers, Mayor, my name is Jeff Bean. I live at 8218 Hendry Boulevard. First, I'd like to say I support differing views in our community. I think it was fine that there was a woman that came in and spoke her mind. She's a member of our community, and I think we have to respect that. That's what freedom of speech is all about. If you live in our community, you have a say in what goes on here. What I resent is the cowardly engagement by Iverson of the hate group mass resistance. I would like to make two quick points that haven't been made. First, to the city council and the law enforcement community, we must be vigilant and prepared for any outside agitators. We've had a few this evening, and they've spoken their piece. As previously mentioned by a gentleman before me, the Southern Poverty Law Center has listed them as an active hate group, and we should not underestimate them. Second, to mass resistance, if you come into our community and violate our cultural norms, you should expect to be met by a lawful, yet forceful, group of citizens who will do everything in our power to counter your hate and your bigoted, narrow-mindedness. You have no voice in our community. You have no voice in our community, and you have no business being here. Thank you.
Fred Lindholm at 10862 Hart Avenue. Only lived here for 46 years. And my wife and I are both Friends of the Library and members of Southern Poverty Group. My wife had a daycare system in our house for 22 years, and the, one of the big things of that group was that she always brought the kids to the rec center to shake out all their silliness before they went to the library and saw the predecessors to Ms. Joyce and Ms. Joyce and so forth. And that was a high point of the program that she had. I also want to mention that the library has been recognized as one of the best in the state. The recreation center has been recognized as the best in the state, also the police, the public safety department. And it is because of the work that the city council does and the employees of the city. So that we are where we want to be, and we've been here for a long time because of that. Thank you.
Ben Phallic, 13129 Borgman. Two very brief points. The first is, I want to express my frustration that there isn't currently a way to donate to the library or the Friends of the Library online, at least as far as I could tell before my phone died. So I, just a few minutes ago, set up a GoFundMe that anyone is welcome to contribute if you need that, need that opportunity right now, or I'm sure there are ways, lower-tech ways, to invest in this really, a very, very sound investment. The second is that, and this was the big draw tonight, I would encourage people to stay for agenda item number three, the Environmental Advisory Council Committee has done some amazing work. I'm just a very new member, and the climate mayor's organization is another exciting, progressive piece of work that we're excited to put forward tonight. Thank you.
Hi there. My name's Thomas Rogers, and I live on Central Enduret, so I'm not a resident of Huntington Woods, but I'm just hoping to say one thing loud and clear before, it looks like we're wrapping up soon here, that for me personally, this has been challenging to hear some of the hateful things that have been said. I'm a white cisgender gay male, so mainly prejudiced by my sexuality, but it's been difficult for me, my own identity, but also hearing the small few, but hurtful things that have been said by the few folks who came up here and spoke hurtful, hateful things. And so, that being said, I just want to say to my fellow members of the LGBT community, specifically the trans community, that I see you, I love you, and I will follow you and do whatever you need me to do to support you. And I hope you know that this room appears to be full of folks who see you and recognize you as well. And so you need us. We're here with you in spirit, and I just want to say I love you.
My name is Satrice Tillman.
And I'm Brandy Smith. I'm the trans justice coordinator at the Ruth Ella Center.
And I am the chair of the Youth Advisory Board at the Ruth Ella Center in Hainipark, Michigan. I currently live in Southfield, Michigan, which is not too far from here. As Janice Point Dexter stated earlier, though I'm not a resident, I shop here. I exist here. On behalf of the transgender community, we want to thank everyone here for supporting us. We didn't have a program like this growing up, so this is super different for us. We only see things like this on TV. Again, everyone here has their right or are entitled to their right of opinion, but that's what that is, your opinion. Regardless of how you feel, we are existing in this community. I'm thinking about the children. Hate is taught at home. We hope that this program isn't taking away from children that enjoy this, that learn from this. Again, thank you for your support in our community.
Hi, my name's Doug. I live on 25416 Henley. I have not lived in Huntington Woods for 30 years. I've only lived in Huntington Woods for about 18 months. I moved here with my wife and two children 18 months ago, and we love reading and learning about, you know, new and different points of view, and for that reason, we love the library. That's what the library is about. My family values include acceptance, love, and inclusiveness. We strongly advise our children to avoid using the H-word. Fear, fear of the different, fear of what they don't know or understand, fear is what defines them, these people who wanted to come here tonight. And fear drives them to express their hateful values. We reject fear, full stop. And I am so proud of the community that we now belong to. I can't imagine raising my children anywhere else. Thank you.
Thank you for all your comments. Normally, during public participation, we don't have comments from the commission, but I know each and every one of us would like to make a short comment, so I'm going to turn this over to the commission before closing public participation.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor? I just want to make a few comments. I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. I do want to say that when this program started, I did receive one letter from a resident. Ms. Nantis, who spoke this evening, did send a letter. That's the only piece of correspondence, for the record, that I ever received from a city resident in opposition to this program. But I will say this, when Ms. Iverson set off this firestorm of controversy in my time on this commission, I've never received so much correspondence from city residents on any single issue by email, Facebook message, or phone call. And the correspondence received from city residents was 100%, 100% in favor of the program. Let me say this too, after having been elected and then re-elected, you learn quickly, if you want to keep sitting in this chair, you learn who you work for. And you work for the residents, the taxpayers, the voters of this city, not for outside hate groups. So, starting about a week and a half ago, when this hate group began corresponding with the commission, the colleagues that you see remaining here simply ignored the emails. They didn't warrant a response. There's no sense in engaging. However, I will tell you, it was extremely disappointing when the hate group forwarded to us a chain of emails that showed at the bottom that our colleague had been corresponding and had invited this group into our community. So, she's now resigned, and as you know, we've amended our agenda to accept her resignation and we'll be closing that chapter. We have a diverse community here and this community deserves diverse programming. The nice thing about living in a democracy is you get choices. If you like the programming, you go to it, and if you don't like the programming, you don't have to go to it. And so, I see absolutely no reason not to offer this programming. It's very popular. In fact, I recall, we've even had to move it to a larger venue to accommodate the amount of people that want to attend. I've heard very positive feedback from the folks who attend, who have attended the event. And I want to put the community's mind at rest. I've spoken with our police chief. I'm not going to disclose the details of the conversation for obvious reasons, but we have plans in place. The chief is very competent and we will do what's necessary. This commission's primary responsibility is to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of this community. And we will do that. And so, we will do what's necessary to take steps to clean up the mess that's been dumped upon us by our departing colleague. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
In October 2011, Ordinance 541, the Human Rights Ordinance, was adopted by Huntington Woods. After one, after one year of discussion with similar things like this, but going on from week to week. It was proposed because two gay residents had been denied the purchase of a home when the homeowner said, "I don't have to sell to you." There were no state or federal laws that offered protection. Similar ordinances have been adopted by Ferndale, Pleasant Ridge, and Royal Oak. Detroit was sort of the godfather on this. Our ordinance reads, and it was meant to cover everything not covered in the State of Michigan Elliot Larson Civil Rights Act. In recognition of the inherent dignity and equal and inalienable rights of all members of the human family, it is the policy of the City of Huntington Woods to assure equal opportunity to all persons in the area of employment, housing, public accommodation, and public service because of race, color, religion, sex, age, height or weight, marital status, sexual orientation, familial status, national origin, or physical or mental disability resulting in the unequal treatment or separation of any person, or denial, prevention, limitation, or otherwise adversely affecting the benefit or enjoyment of any person of employment, ownership, or occupancy of real property or public accommodation, and public service. We have had no complaints in seven years. The Drag Queen Program has run for one year. We have had no complaints from participants or their parents. The assumption made by outside groups about people that are gay or lesbian are sexual predators has no basis in fact. We thank all the residents who've come out to remind people that Huntington Woods is a welcoming community. When we said the pledge, remember what the last sentence says. "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we're gonna start with doing this first. We're gonna hand the former colleague's nameplate over to the city manager. And as they say, take it off the table. I will tell you this, in the almost, this is, I've finished nine years as a city commissioner in this city, I've never been more proud to be a city commissioner in Huntington Woods and I've never been more proud to, in the 42 years that we've lived here, to have been a resident of this city. This is just a great night. It's also the best night that the Friends of the Library probably ever had in its existence in terms of new members and support. And I can tell you this, the Drag Queen Story Hour has now got rock star status. I was, I was unable to find any literature of any kind, medical literature, psychological literature, psychiatric literature, anything that would support a correlation between a child hearing a story in this type of setting with any type of adverse effect or impact. It's an assumption that's based on falsehood. So I'm gonna tell you now, I have a granddaughter who just turned one last week and a grandson who just turned five months, and I can tell you, as soon as they're able to be able to sit down and listen to a story for some time, I would be proud to sit there and take them to this story hour. Thank you.
Thank you. The goal of any storytime program is to promote reading and the love of books to children. Reading is one of the most fundamental things we can teach our children, and it's extremely important that children learn how to read and learn to appreciate the written word. We can all agree that this is a good thing. Drag queens are part of society and they deserve the right to be included in society. They are not harming anyone by offering the gift of reading. The added benefit of Drag Queen Storytime is to promote, in a welcoming environment, acceptance, and hopefully decrease anti-LGBT bullying by introducing children to difference. I for one am proud to support Drag Queen Storytime, for if by the efforts of this program, one child feels more accepted, less bullied, and less likely to be depressed or have feelings of suicide, then we have succeeded. Thank you. Let's do, we get to do a proclamation next, which is usually one of the fun things during an agenda, so I want to do that before the crowd takes off because it's a, it's a nice proclamation. And we have a proclamation to the, of the City of Huntington Woods City Commission to thank Norup International School for helping seniors with leaf pickup. And Lenny Newman, who's here with us this, this evening and spoke earlier, had this idea. He's a member of our Senior Advisory Council, and he came up with this idea and has made sure it works. So whereas the City of Huntington Woods created the Senior Advisory Committee in 2010, and one of the purposes was to make recommendations regarding senior services, and whereas the city undertook a citywide older assessment, older adult assessment in 2012, and whereas help with leaf pickup was an important need identified in the assessment, and whereas Huntington Woods is densely tree city, which makes leaf cleanup difficult for some older adults throughout the fall, and whereas older adults in our community want to maintain the appearance and value of their homes, and whereas the Senior Advisory Committee collaborated with Norup International School to create a free fall pickup leaf program for older adults, and whereas 45 student volunteers raked leaves for 82 households on November 15th and 21st, 2018. Now therefore be it resolved that the Huntington Woods City Commission expresses sincere gratitude to the Norup International School staff and student volunteers who made a difference in the lives of the older adults in the city by raking leaves to the road for pickup, and we look forward to the continuation of this program in the future. Proclaim this 18th day of December, 2018. Thank you.
We're gonna take a five-minute recess, but we encourage you to stay for the rest of the meeting if you're interested.
Remember, 1A is the resignation.
Where y'all going now? Okay, we're gonna reconvene the city commission meeting. Please, if you're, if you're having any discussions, please go out in the hallway. Our first item of business, 1A, is to accept the resignation of Commissioner Allison Iverson. So moved.
Second.
Any public comment or questions? Any comments or questions from the commission?
I think that's been thoroughly vetted, Mr. Mayor.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item 1B is a matter of appointing a new mayor pro tem for the next year. Anyone care to make a motion?
Move that we appoint a new mayor pro tem. Commissioner Jenks?
Second? No, I can't.
Notice the little hesitation there, you know?
Was that a second?
It was.
Okay.
I have a question, sir. Does my salary go up? From $1?
You get a dollar, a dollar and 10 cents.
No, but you're only allowed to speak one minute during Commissioner comments instead of three.
That's an emphatic second, Mr. Mayor, on that.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item number one is the presentation of the 2017-2018 financial statements and acceptance of the audit. Earlier this evening, at 7 o'clock, we had a special commission meeting where our auditor presented the annual financial report to us. I'm gonna turn this over to our finance director for just a brief overview of the comments from our auditor.
So we finished the year in our general fund with a surplus of $293,000, which is very good news for the city. Our unassigned fund balances upwards of 40% in the general fund, which is a very good status for the city. We continue to have, look at ways to fund our pension and healthcare liabilities, but as overall, it was a very good audit, there was no findings. We got an unmodified opinion, which is the highest opinion you can get from the audit.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to accept and file the audit?
So moved.
Support.
Any public comment? Any comments or questions from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, there's two things that I want to point out, two things that I think are of important note, and that is that we've taken our unfunded pension liability from 57% last fiscal year to 63% this fiscal year. So that's a significant improvement, according to the CAFR, and that our rainy day fund, if you will, is at 60%. And, you know, a lot of communities are at 30%, 40%. That's not gonna give them much of a rainy day to cover, much to cover in case of a rainy day. 60% puts us in a pretty good position in the event something were to happen or we have a unexpected expenditure or something like that. So I think that we've done a really good job of positioning ourself going into the next fiscal year and want to commend the staff for doing a good job with the investment return, too. I think we had a real nice job, job well done.
I'd also like to add my thanks to the Finance Department, Tim Rollins, who recently took over the job from our longtime finance director, has done an outstanding job, and thanks for all your hard work on preparing all these documents. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item number two was moved to January, so item number three is a matter of consideration that the City of Huntington Woods join the Climate Mayor's Organization.
Yes, this is a recommendation comes from the Environmental Advisory Committee. It actually was initiated by a resident who suggested that the city do what we can to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. The Environmental Advisory Committee took that mission up, looked at a lot of different organizations that could help with that mission, and with the help of Julie Petrick, who put a lot of work into this, they identified the Climate Mayor's Organization as being the best fit for the City of Huntington Woods, and it is a network of cities led by mayors that demonstrate leadership on climate change. So the Environmental Advisory Committee is recommending that the City of Huntington Woods join that organization.
And Julie is here with us this evening. Do you have anything to add?
I would just add that there are a number of the committee members here additionally to express their support. I think just by their presence, I don't know that we need to add on to this already very extensive meeting. I do want to say that I'm very proud to be a member of this community after what we have seen tonight. And I would add that we did study a number of different organizations. It is a no cost to join this organization and what I thought was a really great fit for our city itself is because we're so small, this is a network of mayors that really supports its members and has networking and monthly meetings that will give support to small communities in starting initiatives that are cost-effective and tailored to small communities, and it would allow us to avoid pitfalls and be inspired by other cities to start initiatives that will reduce our carbon footprint and be economical for our city. So, the EAC strongly recommends that the Huntington Woods joins the Climate Mayor's Organization. If any of the commissioners or mayor has any questions for me, I'd be happy to address them. We did submit an extensive memo detailing the benefits of the organization, and if we do join the organization, we will be joining our neighbors in Ferndale, Royal Oak, Pleasant Ridge, Detroit, and there's a number of other communities in the state, Grand Rapids, Lansing and East Lansing, Ann Arbor, that are also members. So with that... So with that, I will address any questions, and if not, we would recommend passage. Thank you.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any public comment? Any comments or questions from the Commission? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item number four is a matter of consideration that the City of Huntington Woods approve a service agreement with Natural Community Services for the Scotia Park Landscape Management for a second and final year at a cost of five thousand eight hundred dollars.
Yes, the renovation project of Scotia Park has been successful, and we need another year to make sure that the plants fully are take hold, especially in the rain gardens, and that the trees are well taken care of, so we're recommending that the contract with National Community Services be considered for a second year, and they also assist our park staff in learning how to do the maintenance on the park once this contract has been completed.
Do we have a motion?
So moved. Support.
Any public comment? Commission comments? Questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Moving on to item six, matter of consideration on agreement for professional engineering and surveying services between the City of Huntington Woods and Noack and Fraus.
So we recently went out for proposals for engineering and surveying services, and Noack and Fraus was determined to have the lowest price and also the qualifications to continue to be our city engineers, but at the time, we realized we never had entered into a professional services agreement with them, so Carolina has drafted an agreement. It's a lengthy document because the proposal and the fee agreement are attached to it. Think I got emailed to you separately, but that is on the agenda tonight for consideration.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any public comment? Questions or comments from the Commission? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item number seven, recreational marijuana. It's a matter of discussion of options regarding the recreational marijuana referendum approved by voters on November sixth of two thousand and eighteen.
Yes, now that this law is in effect, communities need to make a decision whether or not they want to allow recreational marijuana facilities within their communities, and the facilities range from retail operations to grow operations, operations that check the quality of the marijuana, and if you do not want any of those facilities in your community, then you have to take action to opt out in the form of an ordinance. So this is on the agenda for discussion to see whether or not the Commission wants to adopt an ordinance to opt out and prohibit recreational marijuana facilities, or if they would like to refer it to the Planning Commission and have them go through the public hearing process, get input from residents, and make a recommendation back to the City Commission.
Mr. Mayor, I favor doing nothing with regard to the marijuana issue at this time because it's simply too new and simply too, it's not precise enough at this juncture. I think the idea of having the Planning Commission consider it is the right way to go here because that will afford the opportunity of people who have varying points of view or varying interests or whatever, whether it be growing operations or whatever, or retail. Since we have very little commercial space in our city to deal with that to begin with, I don't see it being, that being much of an issue here. So for the time being, since there is no hurry and nothing really that clear out there, I'd rather that the Planning Commission devote their efforts to it and come to the table with something when they have a product in hand.
Mr. Mayor? So, I mean, no doubt under, obviously...
Before we continue discussion, can we get a second to that? We're referring it to the Planning Commission?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So no doubt, obviously, under state law, this is now, you know, legal to use, and as Commissioner Olson stated, we have very limited space where this could be sold or, you know, these public spaces where a number of these verification or these marijuana operations, if you will, could take place. You know, I'm just not sure that our community, especially the way the law is written, the benefit to our community for having the facility here is written in such a way where it's negligible, if any. And so, you know, I'm almost of the nature, based on if you read the way the state law is written, it almost makes sense based on the nature of our community and the limited amount of space, that we would just be best to prohibit the sale, the, these storefronts in Huntington Woods. I just think that, to me, you know, we could easily go to another community and purchase it there, that the limited retail space we have here, I don't think the best use of it is this, especially, like I said, the benefit under state law is negligible, and it could cause issues, law enforcement and otherwise. So I would be in favor of just not allowing that type of use here and moving forward that way.
Commissioner Janks? Mayor Protem, Janks?
Yeah, I would like to see a delay even at planning, and the reason behind that is there is a bill currently before the governor which would adopt federal standards instead of using state standards. If that occurs, there will be a large amount of litigation and making, I think it's four oh two nine or four two oh nine. The other thing is, is I think Michigan, the Michigan Municipal League has some background material on it, but I would like to wait a little while, even at planning, until we get a little bit more clarity on what's going on. There are a couple of bills that are trying to water down and change the rights that the public voted for, and we could hold public hearings and stuff like that, but it would be a lot better if we had much firmer laws on it as it relates to what's working through the legislature and what's going before the governor.
I think that by referring it to the Planning Commission, that they are going to take the opportunity to take the time to see what develops, and working with our city attorney, before they get to a point where they are going to have an ordinance that would go to a public hearing. So I think the right thing to do is refer it to the Planning Commission.
Agree one hundred percent. I just don't think it's a good idea right now to make decisions about anything with regard to this because there really isn't anything to make decisions about right now. So I'd much rather let Mr. Doktoroff and company deal with that.
Is there any public comment? See one member of the Planning Commission back there.
We're giving you a job.
Any other comments or questions? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Item number eight is a matter of consideration of reappointments and filling vacancies to our boards, commissions, and committees. There are certain committees that are mayoral appointments, so I would like to make a recommendation to those committees and ask that the Commission support my recommendations. For the Planning Commission, reappointment for a three-year term expiring twelve thirty-one twenty-one of Aaron Sullivan. For the Library Advisory Board, two reappointments, Laura Archambeau and Judy Goldsmith, also three-year terms expiring twelve thirty-one twenty-one. For the Historic District Committee, an appointment of Chris Vogelheim to a three-year term, and for the Ethics Committee, an appointment of Manjula Kuza Egan for a three-year term.
I'll move to confirm the mayoral appointments as stated.
Second.
Any public comments? Any other comments or questions at the Commission? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. For the Commission appointments, we'll start with Mayor Protem, Janks.
Board of Review, reappoint Kevin Keller.
I'll second that.
Want to do them all together?
Oh, you want me to do them all together?
No.
One by one.
Commissioner, would you?
Rosel. All right, then I'll move the reappointment of Aaron Reddish and Joseph Zeildorf to the Environmental Advisory Board.
Commissioner Olson?
For the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, Jeff Eisen, Joseph Zeildorf, and also the appointment of Frank Spencer.
Mayor Protem. Zoning Board.
For the Zoning Board of Appeals, reappointment of Mitch Meisner and Joseph Claye, and appointment of Ben Phallic and Adam Wallace. And at least one of those people is here, might want to introduce himself. Mr. Phallic.
For the Construction Board of Appeals, the reappointment of Richard Pollan and Don Pratt, and the appointment of Jeremy Wolfe.
Senior Advisory Committee, Melissa, E. Melissa Gad, and with regard to the Communication Advisory Committee, the appointment of William Butler, and I'll finish up with the Arts and Garden Board, the reappointment of Pam Haxton.
The Budget Advisory Committee, the reappointment of Adam Kaplan, and the Emergency Advisory Committee, we have one open seat.
Mr. Mayor, just as a matter of note, at our January meeting, I'd like us to consider the creation of, not the creation, but the modification, rather, of the Communications Committee from an advisory committee to an actual standing committee within the city.
Okay, do we, first of all, do we have a motion to accept all the appointments?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. And we'll ask Administration, City Manager, to work on the proper wording for the Communication Advisory Committee.
Sure.
I would point out that there are several open seats. We are still looking for volunteers. We have one open seat on the Environmental Advisory Board, two open seats on Parks and Recreation, two open seats on the Senior Advisory Committee, and two open seats on the Arts and Garden Board, as well as one open seat on the Emergency Advisory Committee. So anyone who's interested in serving on our boards and commissions, there's applications available online or stop at City Hall. The, all the committees are, have representatives from the City Commission liaisons that we rotate through, so for two thousand and nineteen, Commissioner Rosel will have the, it's no longer the BART Board, the Arts and Garden Board, and we're going to have to vote on the other one. Commissioner Olson will have Environmental Advisory Committee and the Historic District Commission. Commissioner Janks will have the Library Advisory Board, the Zoning Board of Appeals, the MML Legislative Coordinator, and the mayor will take the Parks and Recreation and the Emergency Response Committee. We also need one more motion there as a member, there's one member of the City Commission that serves as a voting member on our Planning Commission each year, so we need a motion to appoint Joe Rosel to a one-year term on the Planning Commission.
So moved. Support.
Any comments or questions?
Tell him to work on that marijuana issue.
Yeah.
Oh, good.
Looking forward to it, Mr. Mayor.
Excuse me, maybe, he may be biased.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
This will be, this will be my, what, ninth tour of duty on the Planning Commission, so.
Good, you're very good at it.
You still have to take the training.
Oh, thank you.
Item number nine is a matter of receiving and filing the Planning Commission annual report. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any public comment? Any comments or questions from the Commission? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Reports of minutes, we have four sets of reports of minutes. Do we have a motion to receive and file?
So moved. So moved. Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Warrant number three forty-five, do we have a motion to accept, subject to full audit?
So moved. Second.
Any comments or questions? I got a feeling the public participation section of this meeting tired everybody out up here. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Now, moving on to our City Managers' Report.
Yeah, a couple of notes from Parks and Recreation. The first is the ice rink, Men's Club Field. It has been cold, but not cold enough, so it's not ready for skating. You could check our website, and we'll put a notice up there when the rinks are ready for skating. Would also like to extend the thanks to Ron Codon, who was Santa for two events this year, the Senior Holiday Lunch, and also Santa's Holiday Party. And with the holidays coming up, you can check our e-newsletter that goes out this week. It has the hours that the recreation center, library are open and when they're closed. And then lastly, we do have the vacancy on the City Commission, so we'll have information on our website as well as our e-blast with an application to fill out, and we will set a deadline for those to be submitted, and then applicants will be interviewed by the City Commission, and somebody will be appointed in January or February.
Are there any questions of the City Manager?
Could you just state for the record how long we have to make that appointment?
Thirty days.
Thank you.
Commissioner's remarks, Mayor Protem, Janks?
One suggestion. If you're watching this, or if you have friends that are watching this, and you liked what you saw before about the Drag Queens, send a contribution to the Friends of the Huntington Woods Library. The more contributions we get, the more we can say we support the library as well as we support diversity in our community. Have a happy and safe holiday.
Thank you. Commissioner Rosel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know that a lot of residents who couldn't make it today are anxious to watch this evening's meeting. I know we couldn't broadcast live from this location, so if we could get this out on the internet and on a television broadcast as quickly as possible, I would greatly appreciate that. I want to thank my colleagues for their professionalism over the last week and a half in dealing with the firestorm that we've been dealing with, especially over the last two days. I want to thank the residents of this community. Been very proud to live here the last fifteen years. Been very proud to live here the last 15 years. We sort of talk about Huntington Woods as a very special place, and regardless of where you fall on this issue, I think you kind of noticed that tonight, that Huntington Woods is a very special place, and evidenced by the folks that got up and spoke tonight on both sides of the issue, you definitely see that our residents are some of the finest people in this state, and so I want to thank them for taking the time to support this community and support this program, and so I appreciate it, and I wish everyone a safe and happy holiday season. And if you're interested in filling this vacancy, please take the time to fill out the application, and we'll begin that interview process in the coming weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Olson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I wanted to start with, before all the interesting stuff started tonight, we had a meeting with our city auditor, and I want to thank Tim Rowland, our finance director, for the work he's done since Tony retired, and those were very big shoes to fill, and you've done more than great in filling them, and to listen to the auditor talk about the way Huntington Woods performs and the way our finance operations are directed are truly a credit both to Tim and to our city manager, Amy Sullivan. So I want to express my appreciation to them. I thought it was a phenomenal turnout tonight, just a phenomenal exercise of citizens' rights and the right to be heard and the right to express their opinions, and I'm very grateful to everybody who turned out, and it really was, like I said, it's the best night the library's ever, probably ever had, and the drag queen story hour is now an iconic term in the lexicon, so, you know, just when you think you're worried about something, it's going to be bigger and better, and I also want to thank our public safety department tonight for being here. It made me feel a whole lot better, and other than that, I just wish everybody a wonderful, healthy, happy holiday season and a healthy and happy new year. Thank you.
I'd also like to add thanks to the rec staff here at the Gillum Recreation Center for setting up our city hall for this evening, and for the players of the pickleball that gave up their courts to allow us to be here. And I'd also like to wish everyone a safe and happy holiday, and looking forward to seeing everyone in January. Good night.
Good night.